All right, it's a little after six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our August 18th Select Board Meeting. Lee, you're out there, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I'm right here.
Thanks.
I can just about hear you.
Is that any better?
Yes, quite a bit, thanks.
All right, thank you. Sapa hasn't?
Go ahead, Arnie.
All good?
They're working on it, yep.
The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our August 4th Select Board Meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second. Heather is the motion, Lee Gustafson's the second. Any corrections, changes, omissions, errors? Anybody got anything on the minutes? I have none.
No, I don't have any.
Lee, are you okay with them?
I'm good.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there's anyone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? Anybody have their hand up? Amy?
No.
All quiet? None here? None. Next item is old business, and Julie, can you take us through our old business?
I can. So, I have met on the library heating issue, which has been an ongoing issue for a couple years now. We finally met with Control Technologies. They are going to... The heating system and ventilation system in the library has been kind of rigged together, pieced together over the years. So, a lot of the parts are not talking to each other well, and a lot of stuff is old and no longer serviceable. So, Control Technologies is going to be putting together a proposal to redo that system, taking into consideration the pieces that are new. We added mini splits a couple years ago, we added a new furnace a few years ago, and this is something that ARPA money could potentially be used for, is ventilation systems. So, I'll keep you updated on that as we get the numbers, as that comes in. Public Safety Building, we're plugging along. Inspections are scheduled for this week. We did have some issues with electrical as far as getting that completed in time, so we did... It occurred to me the end of last week that when we hired our new wastewater guy, we hired a master electrician. So, we shifted Wayne over to the Public Safety Building, and he was able to help get the electrician caught up so that we could meet inspection deadlines, which are the end of the week. So, already that has proved to be a wonderful decision that we made. Planning Commission Meeting, Arnie and I, and I believe Lee was on Zoom, attended the Planning Commission Meeting on Monday night. I was asked to attend to provide some history as to what was the impetus behind the zoning amendments that were requested. I think it was productive. There were some hairy points, but it was productive, I think, at the end of the day, and hopefully the Planning Commission can now move forward. They seem to have a closer to unified vision of figuring out how they're going to move forward together and review the document and make the changes that are needed. And that, of course, is being done with the help of Jason from Regional Planning, as well as Preston, our new zoning administrator, who, of course, is a land use planner by trade. So, that seems to be moving in the right direction so far. An update on Police Department policies. There was some discussion about the new policies that are going to be required, or the policies that are required when we go into the new building, things like processing of people as they're arrested. Now, we have that, we will have that ability to process, and we also will have holding cells. Rick has drafted policies, I'll be reviewing them tomorrow. They are what is being used currently in the city of Hartford and a few other places. So, we... The goal is that all of the new policies will be adopted by the Police Department, and all police officers will be signing acknowledgements that they have received those policies, and we should have all of that by September 1st. Currently, occupancy is set for September 2nd, so we should be in line to have all of that completed. I just wanted to update you on that. And we had the six mile, six hour run. They had a great attendance. A lot of people very excited. There were, let's see, she sent me some numbers. Fifty-four runners. The person who ran the farthest did 19 laps, covering approximately 38 miles in six hours.
Wow. Wow.
There were four volunteers, which I guess was what was needed, and then a lot of donations from Smithy's, Coda and Coda, and others in town. So, they had a great event. My understanding is they will be definitely planning on doing it again next year and having that be an annual event. So, that was a big success on the green. And also, the slippery slope goats are now removed from the Brookside Trail. They were brought in to chew down the barberry, so instead of using toxic chemicals on the trail, we were able to use the goats to chew down barberry. We'll see how long that lasts, and maybe is something that we'll look at doing every year.
They did a good job.
They did do a good job.
It's a pretty big area.
It is a big area that they covered.
Wiped clean.
It is, it is, and just a fun project.
And the bridge is going to be coming up soon.
The bridge is coming up. Kirby is working through the design now, getting all those pieces in place. Beams are in, all the wood is in. We're now working on the railing system with Springfield Fence. We've figured that piece out, so they'll be constructing... My goal was, I was hoping they would have it in place at Fall Festival. I'm not positive that that's going to happen. The rain has really held up a lot of highways projects for culverts and such. So, our goal is to have it in by then. I'm not sure we'll make it, but it will definitely be in this fall. And then, Town Fair has been announced. Usually, thank you, so... Usually, you guys appoint somebody as your delegate, your voting member. This year, since I'm on the board, I will be attending. You're well... I'm happy to be your voting delegate, or you can still send a Select Board member. I'm going to leave that to you guys, but we'll put this on the next agenda. And I'll get you guys the information. That's it, done.
That's a lot of positive news.
Yeah.
That's great. Anybody else have any old business?
I have none.
I have none.
Heather, all set? All right. Going to bear with me on our next agenda item. It is a vicious dog hearing, and there's a strict procedure that I have to follow for this. And Julie, hopefully you'll be able to help me out here when I kind of want to.
Can you speak up, please?
I don't know if I could speak up much more than this, I'll try. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's when you're away from the mic.
I'm not that far, but I'll do my best. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, the first thing that has to happen here is we open the meeting by reading the warning or the notice, and I will do that first. Town of Chester, Notice of Public Hearing Regarding Vicious Dog Public Nuisance Complaint, Dog Owned by Mitchell Horton. The Select Board of the Town of Chester, Vermont will hold a public hearing pursuant to 20 VSA, subtitle 3546, as well as the Town of Chester Dog Ordinance on Wednesday, August 18th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, at the Chester Town Hall, second floor, and via Zoom, to hear evidence and receive testimony on a complaint of a vicious dog concerning a dog named Duchess owned by Mitchell Horton presently residing at 659 Davidson Hill Road in Chester, Vermont. Now, is the complainant here, which would be Barbara By? You're here. And respondent, which would be Mitchell Horton? Is Mitchell Horton here with us? I guess not. So, have you folks received a copy of the rules and procedures, and do you have any questions on how this hearing will proceed?
I have not.
Who's speaking out there?
Carl Hurd.
I'm sorry, identify yourself again?
Carl Hurd.
I don't know who he is.
Carl Hurd, are you part of this complaint, or...?
Well, I called it in once, and I've had a confrontation with the dogs a couple of times.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, you will be speaking to this matter when we come up to the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't have a written complaint from him. This is in response to the files.
Yeah, all right. Now, are there any conflict of interest in this matter, or has anybody had any ex parte communications with any of the parties involved? That would be anybody on the Select Board. I have not.
I have not.
You're okay, Lee?
Yeah, I'm okay.
So, whoever's going to be speaking in this matter, we have to swear you in. So, whoever's going to be offering any oral testimony or speaking, can you please stand? And I will read this little statement here, and basically you're going to say I do.
And I need... We just need names of who is going to be speaking.
On Zoom, could we please have a sign of hands or names that are going to be speaking to this matter?
Carl, you will be.
Okay, yeah, I just want to...
Not yet, Carl, not yet. We just need to swear you in.
This is just preliminary procedure stuff, just to make it all official and get it to go where we have to go.
Yeah, I've got to get in front of the camera here.
That's okay.
We can see you.
You are.
Is anybody from River Valley Property Management planning to speak?
I am not.
You're not? Okay, Adam, are you planning to speak?
I am not.
Okay. And then, Barbara By, right?
It's going to be all on you, Barbara.
Anybody else?
I could, I was there too.
Why don't we just swear you in? There's no harm.
I mean, whether you do or not, at least you're sworn in, so you'll be able to speak when it comes out.
And what's the last name, now? Okay, go ahead, Arnie.
So, I hereby solemnly swear that the evidence I give and the cause under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth. I do.
To the best of my knowledge.
Thank you, Carl. All set. Now, we have to go through our information that's been accumulated for this case and presented to the Select Board and enter it into evidence. This is going to take a few minutes to get it all in there, and then from that point, we'll start heading from there.
Notice of the vicious dog hearing.
We need a motion separate for each one of these.
You do. And that one's going to be Exhibit A.
This one's A?
That's going to be A.
So, Exhibit A is the Town of Chester Notice to the owner of the vicious dog hearing, addressed to Michael Horton, and I would entertain a motion to accept this as Exhibit A. So moved.
Second. You know, if you did go over and you sent the letter, we'd say, why did you come?
Can you... Please, Amy? It's Robert Neen, please mute him.
Robert, I don't think he knows he's coming across. Heather's the motion, Lee's the second. All those in favor of accepting the notice as Exhibit A, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Exhibit B is going to be your communication, three different communications from your health officer, Amanda Silva.
I would entertain a motion to accept these documents from our health officer, Amanda Silva. So moved. Lee Gustafson's the motion, Lee Dakin's the second. Any further, any discussion on this? All those in favor of accepting Amanda Silva's documents as part of the evidence of this case as Exhibit B, please say aye.
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 It's okay.
P D, the Police Department reports will be C.
I would entertain a motion to accept as Exhibit C, the Police Department, Chester Police Department reports.
So moved.
Second.
Heather's the motion, Lee Gustafson's the second. Any discussion on these? All those in favor of accepting the Town of Chester Police Department reports as Exhibit C, please say aye.
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 Complaint from Barbara By. It's a complaint.
What are we up to, D?
D, yep.
I would entertain a motion to accept as Exhibit D, the complaint letter, the letter by Barbara By.
So moved.
Second.
Lee is the motion, and Heather is the second. All those in favor of accepting the letter of complaint from Barbara By as evidence D, please say aye.
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 And this is new question from the health officer, two, Mrs. By.
Now, we're up to E. A motion to accept the letter from the health officer, two, Mrs. By, from Amanda Silva, as Exhibit E.
So moved.
Second.
Heather's the motion, Lee is the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 F is communication from the health officer to Michael Horton.
Mitchell Horton.
Mitchell Horton, sorry.
Mitchell. I would entertain a motion to accept the letters addressed to Mitchell Horton as Exhibit F regarding this case. So moved.
Second.
Lee is the motion, Heather's the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And then, you did have communication from an individual who chose, it was victim number two, who has chosen to remain anonymous. It is up to you if you want to accept this into evidence or not.
I would make a motion to accept it into evidence.
So, it's G.
I'll second it.
Heather's the motion, and Lee Gustafson's the second, to accept this information from victim two, which is to remain anonymous as evidence G. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And, well, I should have said it before we had the vote, but I think that will just, it'll carry a little different weight, being anonymous, but it is good information to have and part of the package. Is that the last?
That's the last of it.
One thing that I... No, we did it wrong. So, we have entered all the information presented into the record, and now, at this point, we would invite the complainant to present their oral testimony to the Select Board about the incident. And I would request that you come over to the microphone, or we could bring it your way.
The other thing that can happen is if you just want to read your complaint, or the Select Board can just read your complaint, that can happen that way as well. That's what you want to do? Okay. You can, or the Select Board can. It's up to you. Your choice.
Do you have a copy of it?
Yeah, we do.
You want Arnie to read it?
Okay. "Report of dog bite to Chester Health Officer. Dog bite event Tuesday, July 20th at 10:30 AM across from 659 Davidson Hill Road, Chester, Vermont. My daughter pushing a stroller with my granddaughter and I were walking up Davidson Hill Road. We were across from the driveway of the house at 659 when we heard dogs barking. The dog ran down the driveway and across the road to harass us. The little... The one little dog made most of the noise but didn't charge us, but the second dog, a German Shepherd, proceeded into the road but did not stop. He growled, and with his hackles up, he charged at me. I turned my back to protect my core, and he bit me in my right thigh. Then I began to scream, knowing I was being attacked. The scream was to get the dog owners to do something about the dogs and to get them under control. There were two adults out on the deck calling the dogs back, but nothing happened. We continued up the hill to get away from the dogs. I told my daughter to check to see if I got bit or just scratched. She said that it was a bite and it broke the skin. There was some blood on my pants and holes where the teeth went through. I knew then that I would need to go to urgent care and talk with the police. Maybe four to five minutes later, a white car came up the road, slowed down, and asked if we were the people his dog harassed. I said yes and told him that the dog bit me. He did apologize. He did not give his name, but did not want us to call the police. Said he was on probation and did not need any trouble. I said nothing to affirm or deny what my plans were. My daughter and I went back to her house and made the calls, one to the Springfield Police and one to the Urgent Care Center in Springfield. The big issue at this point was whether the dog had a current rabies shot. Because this house was over the town line into Chester, the police told me to call the Chester Health Officer. The Health Officer of Chester said she would check into this. When I told her the address, she knew that this dog had been reported to her in the past. She kept me up to date with her progress, and on July 22nd, it was determined that the dog did have a current rabies shot, and I did not need to have the series of painful rabies shots. Needless to say, I was much relieved. I am a lifelong dog owner and have worked as a volunteer with the Springfield Humane Society and have never been afraid of dogs. I am cautious until I know an animal, but I must say I was unnerved to be attacked by one and bit. The day after my reported event, the same dog bit a person walking by in the road. This dog needs to be evaluated and held until proven he is not a menace to all innocent walkers on this public road. Barbara By." Now, at this time, I would invite the Select Board members to ask questions of the complainant, if they have any.
Well, thank you for bringing it forward, because I know it's... I know it's traumatizing, and then to have to relive it, so, yeah, it's stressful, and I appreciate that.
And I thank you too, Barbara, old friend.
Yeah, terrifying, and I appreciate that you brought it up in a formal way, because it hadn't been before. So, that's really important. Yeah, so, all I, you know, thank you. If you have anything else you want to ask, but I think your letter, for me, explains and draws a picture that I understand. So, thank you.
Anyone else with any other questions?
I have none.
I just wanted to reiterate what Heather said and how traumatic this must have been, and so sorry.
Hang in a second, Lee. This is Lee Dakin, one of the Select Board members on Zoom. Go ahead, Lee, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to echo what Heather said and how traumatic this must have been for her. I can feel it, and I am so sorry that that happened to you.
Especially troubling when I read the report, it was the child involved, too. I mean, adults is one...
Yeah, well...
We don't know that.
Anybody else have any questions on the Select Board of the folks here? All set? The next thing that would happen would be to ask the pet owner's response to the evidence presented, but I don't believe there's anybody here to speak for the owner of the dog. So, that's just going to just be the way it is. I guess we're going to have to deal with this without his input and just with the testimony that we have and the evidence that we have when we go to deliberative session to determine what the action is going to be of the Select Board. So, we'll figure it out from there. Next item would be the Select Board members to ask questions of the pet owner, but that's not going to be happening. Now, we would invite members of the public to present any relevant information regarding this complaint.
Arnie?
I did receive late yesterday afternoon another complaint from Ann and Michael Sepola, Sepola, who also had an issue that would be presented now. You can read this, I can read this, but it should also be entered as evidence.
This is from Ann and Michael Sepola.
Sepola.
Thank you. Dated August 17th, Tuesday, and it was addressed to Julie Hans and Amanda Silva. Dear Amanda Silva, "Adam Chojanowski of 659 Davidson Hill Road asked us to share recent encounters with his tenant's two dogs. A few weeks ago, I was walking across the street from our home when I heard two dogs barking and running toward me with their owner in pursuit to corral them. I ran into our house. More recently, I was on our front lawn when I heard two dogs approaching again with the owner in pursuit, yelling for them to come back. I ran into our backyard and back door. On another day, one dog got away and threatened my husband, Michael, at the edge of our driveway, but the dog backed off. My husband then had a cordial conversation with the dog's owner and asked him to either leash them or keep them inside if we were outside. Unfortunately, the German Shepherd later charged a group of our friends who were standing in our driveway, and one on the dog's path jumped into a car to prevent any physical encounter. We reached out to Adam to let him know it seemed like a potentially dangerous situation. Sincerely, Ann and Michael Sepola." So, should we enter this into evidence then, too?
I would make a motion to enter it into evidence as Exhibit...
H.
H.
Second.
Heather's the motion. Lee Gustafson's the second. All those in favor of accepting this as Exhibit H, please say aye.
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 And then Carl's probably going to have something to say. Carl will have something to say.
So, Carl Hurd? Do you wish to speak to this matter? Because we're at the point of the hearing that we're welcoming public comment, that people that might have something to say regarding this issue.
Okay, as I said before, I live on Northfield Drive, and it's my grandchildren and my daughter and her husband that live next door. And I was, I go back and forth a few times during the day, and all of a sudden, these dogs appeared, and my grandson and their two dogs that they have, which are penned, by the way, they go out, they never go out unless they're supervised, and they took and they were backing and really going up against the fence, and my grandson, which ran in the house at the time because he was afraid of a dog that size. And I, so I went up in the doyad there, and I had a skeeple in my... And I, so I went up in the doyad there and I had a skeeple in my, in my truck. And because when I went to get out, I could see that the dog was not afraid of me by any means. And he was, when I got out and went across the driveway and everything and told him to get out of there, you know, to scare him. He went a little bit and then my son-in-law came home, Kevin Spalvin came home and he seemed to know who the dogs belonged to. And he went up and got the owner and come back and the, and the owner drove him home. And that was the end of that day. But I was, there was another day that I was, we can see between us here, the houses. And my wife says, I think the dogs are back. And so, I went up there and they were there. And like I said, he didn't want to let me out of the truck. But once I got my skeeple that I keep in the truck all the time, it was the, the two dogs, there was two dogs there. For the most part was actually the German Shepherd was trying to bite me. But like I said, he, he was smart enough to stay at arm's length with the skeeple. And then they went home. I didn't see him after that. I've had no, I don't know who the owner is or anything like that. Mine's all been verbal, you know, like I said. I just want my, my grandson's dogs and my grandchildren, you know, to be, I don't want them being chewed up by this, this dog. And, and so, I don't have a formal paper to submit to the town of Chester or anything. I did on the first, excuse me, back up a little bit. On the first time, I did call the police. There must be a police report somewhere that I, and I had quite a lengthy conversation from the police department. And lady said that the chief was, he was busy that day, he couldn't come over. I remember that. You know, this was like I say, a few, few days ago. But for the most part, my confrontation's been pretty much verbal. And like I said, and I haven't, they haven't bitten me, thank God, or my grandchildren or their pets. But he's very annoying and most of, and my wife's out in the woods all the time between us here and everything like that. And I don't need them chewing her up either. That's, that's about what I've got to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hurd, for your testimony. Will you allow questions on, on people that speak, no?
Does that, does that ever have to be in writing or anything or is this good enough?
This is good enough.
I, this is a public record and it's been recorded, so I think we're okay with that. And what we can do is also maybe reach out to the chief to see if there's anything on record regarding your, your call to the department.
There should be. I don't recall the date. But the, like I said, the lady, all I remember was that the chief was busy that day and he couldn't come over and investigate or anything like that.
All right, we'll, we'll look into that and thank you for your testimony, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter that's in the public or on Zoom with us? Arnie.
Arnie.
Arnie. Jack Haba.
Jack? Jack, come on over to the microphone, Jack, sorry.
That's okay.
No. It's, it's, it's for the recording purposes, Jack, sorry. Identify yourself and then, I would have brought the mic to you, sorry, Jack.
Anyway, I've known this family for a while and they've helped me a lot. Especially moving a couple of times, they're always right there to come over and, and stuff like that. And I can't believe this happened to a nice family like this with a dog like that. And I told, and Julia's, the two of them could talk. I went to, the other day, I was in the, in the town hall and got a little out of hand, didn't I?
That's okay.
I, I told them that if it was my wife that was hit, to be a dead dog and possibly a owner. But that dog should not be allowed to live. That's my point.
All right, Jack.
That's not, that's not proper to have a dog like that that can scare people like this one did, especially with biting her and everything. What, what if, what if that dog had bitten the grandchild? You know?
It's a terrible situation.
It's not, it's not a good situation, but they're great people. And I just didn't want to, didn't want to hear what they had to say when they called me up and told me what happened. I said, oh, boy. So, anyway, that's my opinion is the dog should be put away.
All right, thank you, Jack.
Yep.
Arnie, I have a question. Can I?
Yeah, we're going to, yep. Because the next item after we go through this, if there's anyone else that would like to make a comment or has a concern to speak, after that, we have more time for questions or comments from the Select Board. So, is there anyone, Amy, nobody else has their hand up? I can't see that far. No?
Amanda, did you have anything you wanted to add or are your reports sufficient?
Can I just talk a little bit about what happened?
Sure.
Amanda Silva, Town Health Officer. So, I was approached by the PD that there's this dog that's been loose. They've had many complaints about it. So, at that time, I wrote both the landowner and the dog owner a letter saying that the dogs need to be on leashes. Within days, we've, we had the two bites. And talking, I did, was able to speak with the dog owner once. The landlord brought his phone over for me to talk to him. He was not acknowledging anything I was saying. He said that we were harassing him. I, I just want the, the dog to be on a leash and he refuses to put the dog on a leash. And it's just not safe. I think the dog either needs to be mandated to be leashed or removed from the premises. But other than that, he wasn't willing to cooperate with me or talk to me. He did end up giving me the clinic that got the rabies, so I was able to verify that. But that was the only other information I could speak with him. He was not communicating with me.
You've got to come over to.
Y'all are going to have to walk over to the microphone. Sorry.
It's recorded ended people on Zoom, sorry.
Just give your name and speak up.
Sure. Caroline E. Belt. Just a question along the lines of what you had said. If, if his quote unquote punishment would be to, you know, adhere that the dog remains on a leash, given this man's prior history with this dog, is he going to abide by that? And I feel that he's not going to. He's been told before that he needs to be on a leash and he didn't comply. So, I don't know at this point what it's going to take for this man to control his dog. He is in control of the dog when he's outside with it. I've been up the road before and the dog's been out and it has scared me because it's, it's approached me, it's been barking, but he's been outside. And it does listen to him. But this last time, he wasn't anywhere around. He had a friend that was visiting and was on the porch, a woman, I don't know her name. And that's who we were screaming to, to control your dog, to release it from us so we can continue our walk. But I don't know if that's enough for him to actually comply and, and go with the, his punishment of keeping his dog on a leash because I don't think that's enough. I don't know what it's going to take, who it's going to take to get bit for him to, to listen and control his animal. Because he doesn't have control over it. I know in a statement, he said that the dog was a service dog to him and that he doesn't leave his side. And I'm quoting from what he has said. And if that's true, where was he when these bites happened? Because he wasn't at the dog's side. The dog was not with him. So, I just, for the future and for those who are walking by, I want them to be safe because I had my baby with me and I don't know what would happen. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for that testimony.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments that would like to offer regarding this case?
I just had a question. Has the dog been registered, registered in the town of Chester?
Amanda says no, it hasn't. Not yet.
Well, I know that some of the information that we received was told that he was told, the owner was told that they needed to be registered within the town. And so, I was just wanting to clarify whether or not he has been yet.
Well, Lee, that kind of rolls us right into the next part of the hearing, which is to invite more questions or comments from members of the Select Board at this point. So, thank you, Lee.
I have a question as to, does anyone know, he's a tenant, so he's renting is how I understand it. So, how long has he been there and how long has the dog's been there?
The landlord is on.
Do you want to swear me in?
Sure, Adam. You need to swear.
Yeah, hold on a second, Adam. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence you are about to give in the case under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And Adam, what's your last name again?
Trojanowski.
All right, Adam, you had a question, Heather, for Adam?
Yeah, how long have they, the people that you're renting to, how long have they resided in the home?
So, he's been here, his, his initial lease is up at the end of this month.
So, I don't know how, I don't know how long the lease is.
Oh, sorry. One year. One year.
So, he's been there one year and have the dogs been with them, him the whole time?
He, when he moved in, had only one dog, the smaller one. At some point, he got the other dog and he did not notify me in any way. I only found out because somebody from up the street had called me or actually came into my girlfriend's place of work and informed her of some issues.
Well, and do you know approximately how long that has been?
So, that happened on April 1st. I remember that clearly because it was April Fool's Day. So, I actually waited one day just to make sure there was no question on if this was some sort of joke. And then I contacted the person who had the complaint and he told me a lot of things. And I immediately called the police and asked to speak with somebody about this and asked if there were any prior complaints. At the time, there were none. The detective, Adam Woodall, said there was no dog on dog and no dog on person violence reported. I asked him to please talk with the person who contacted me and I gave him his name and number. I think it's James Damico, Damaco. He lives on Lock Road. And I. Because there was no actual previous police reports or anything like that and that I had passed this off to the police to see if there was anything from what James had said. And James had not wished to tell me any names at all. He just was very vague and said, some people have told him that there was a problem and he wanted me to know. So, that's, I assume that somewhere around April is when the tenant got the, the second dog because he did not come with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Adam.
We have no his, understanding of the history prior to the dog being, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Select Board members regarding this matter?
So, I have a, I have a couple of questions. Not super familiar with our dog ordinance, but is it true that dogs need to be on a leash if they're not on the property or anytime they're outside the house?
They need to be controlled on their property.
Okay. So, and I thought I read somewhere that the owner of these dogs has a pretty cavalier attitude about them approaching people or whatever and didn't, wasn't taking this matter seriously at all. Is that your understanding?
Yes, and he also invited me to meet the dog and the date and time, he wasn't home.
Okay. From what it sounds like to me, the dog in question and the incidents in question, which are awful, there doesn't seem, there seems to be a pattern of not necessarily caring what the law is or adhering to whatever the laws are or being willing to, other than apologizing, maybe not in, you know, a true spirit of apology. But it, it seems like this dog is a threat and has approached or attacked several people, not just Mrs. By. So, it sounds like you've had more interaction with him than anybody else. What's your impression as far as any action that we could take as a town, whether or not it would be received and received well?
I don't think he will go by anything that you put in place. He was very not willing to even come, even register the dog and just little things like that. He has been ticketed by the PD with no response.
Who's speaking? Amanda?
I'm sorry, it's Amanda, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I don't think he's, would be compliant with anything that you said.
And I know there've been a couple of police reports submitted to this. Has he had actual interaction with the police or the police have showed up and dropped things at the door?
Yeah, they, they won't, he won't answer the door, so they've dropped it at the door. But he did acknowledge he received them.
Okay.
We do have a report from the police department from Chester on 7/22/21 that he was visited by one of our officers.
Well, and that was my question, Lee, was whether or not the officers actually spoke with him or just dropped something off at the door? Because that was the impression that I got, that he never had that interaction.
You know what? And I don't see that specifically.
The other question I had, or the impression I got in reading through all this information was that the owner has some control over the dogs verbally if the dogs are out, but no one else does. So, if the owner is not in the presence of the dog when the dogs are out, then they have absolutely no, there's no control over these animals.
Correct. Even though he had mentioned, the brief phone call that we had, he said that the dogs never leave his side and that, that wasn't his dog because he was always home with his dogs, but obviously with their statement, he wasn't.
So, have there been sightings of other dogs in the neighborhood that match the description of the ones that bit Mrs. By?
I have not been told of any. I don't know if the PD has.
Okay.
Well, also, I, I believe he hasn't followed through with Amanda as he said he would. And also, there have been, we have had another letter from the other family on the road that the dogs did not respond to his calling them back. So, it's unclear to me what kind of control he has. I understood that he has a shock collar, but I'm not, that's, you know, there's, he said he'd only had to use it three times. I don't know why he would use it and he didn't explain that. So, to Amanda, I think it was to Amanda, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
What's troubling to me is that he hasn't even taken this serious enough to show up at the hearing.
Right.
I mean, that kind of just tells it all as far as he can care less about what's going on, what trouble the dog has been, what's happening around him and the fact that there's a big part of his neighborhood here voicing their opinions and their concern about a potential, well, it already has been manifested itself in a serious manner, but it could be a lot worse.
So, Arnie, just a question. Do we know for a fact that he received notification of this meeting?
Adam confirmed for me that, that he has received notification of this hearing.
Okay, so he is totally aware of this meeting and just chose not to show up?
And that was part of the evidence that we put in there were the letters that were brought to him and.
Yeah, I mean, just dropping something off at somebody's house is no, not necessarily guaranteed that they got the information. So, I'm just, just wanting to verify.
My understanding is that he is aware of this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And the fact that just to dismiss it is troubling. Because it kind of makes it, it seems like it would be hard no matter what we do as a board. It doesn't sound like he's going to take it too serious. I mean, he's.
Well, the other thing that concerns me is this statement to Mrs. By that, please don't call the police because I'm on parole or whatever. I mean, to me, that just shows total. I mean, to me, that just shows total lack of responsibility, period.
Yeah.
I guess the next question is, what are our options? Where do we go from here? And Mrs. By has a question or a comment?
We're gonna, we're gonna finish up this procedure as far as the steps that we have to go for this hearing and stuff, and then we would enter into a deliberative session to decide that. And we do have options. There are, there was two different ways when it goes where there is either a potentially vicious dog or a vicious dog. And there's a, a little discrepancy between the two as far as the definition of it when it inflicts harm to someone and stuff. So, and there are options in the statute and in our regulations, the dog ordinances, on the actions that we can take.
Right.
They're a little more serious when it is a vicious dog, they're a little more limiting when it's a potentially vicious dog. The part that I, we have to decide is under which two guidelines is it going to fall? And then, from there, we would have a discussion, review the evidence, deliberate, and then decide on what action we would, we would take as a board.
So, that's done in deliberative session, not now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I would like to say one more thing.
Oh, no, this is the time for anybody that has any-
Okay, that, to me, you know, I'm a dog lover. And I just, we're talking so much about the dog, but really, it's the human being that's responsible for the dog that doesn't take action. And, you know, in that part, it just saddens me, that, you know? And I don't know where assessing dogs for being able to be rehabilitated, that's not my expertise, but to have that many complaints, like not just nipping bites and all these complaints in a relatively very short amount of time, concerns me a great deal.
Mm-hmm. As, as it does me, thank you.
So, at this point, we would allow any final comments or questions from the complainant or the dog owner? Or anybody that wouldn't like to make a final statement to the Select Board?
Yes, well, excuse me?
Go ahead, Mr. Hurd.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to, somebody to definitely check on the police report that I called in that first time that I had the confrontation with the dogs because I had a fairly, I'd want to say probably five or 10 minutes with, with the lady that I talked to. And I, I'd just like to make sure that that got through. Right. Because that was fairly detailed because I was standing right in front of the dog.
We will check on that, Mr. Hurd, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, then we have to postpone this.
You can still, you can still deliberate if you want to.
You're gonna have to come on up to the microphone and give us your name and-
Is this meeting over?
No, not yet, sir.
Okay, the, the dog portion of it, over?
Almost.
Almost.
Okay.
Hi there, my name's Greg Nader, resident Chester here. Here primarily to support the board and thank you for all the time and effort it takes to go through this process. But I did have one question that came up, and that is if the dog stays in Chester after this hearing and attacks or harms anybody else, does the town itself take on any liability?
Great question.
That, that's a legal question that I don't know, I, I'm not capable of answering something like that.
My understanding from Jim has been when the board renders a decision of confinement or somehow the dog remains, but they put forth an order that they feel will confine the dog or, or, you know, solve the issue, if the owner does not follow through on that, that liability goes back to the owner. But I don't believe, and, and, in, in the case of, when, when we went through this unfortunately with you guys, we had kind of asked some of those questions and at that point, he did not feel that the liability would come back to the town. If the Select Board were to ignore or be negligent in some way, then of course, the liability could potentially come back to the town.
And I do have a comment, even though it's not legal or the liability is not on the town, as a Select Board member, I feel the responsibility is on us.
Correct.
So, irrespective of that, if, if this dog goes out and hurts another person, and, you know, grandmas are important, babies are too, but, you know, if any person, other dog is hurt, I, I take that responsibility really seriously. So, whether it's the liability issue or not, I don't know, but-
Yeah, I was just kind of curious because I know there are some references to it in the ordinance, but it's not real clear to layman, so.
Thank you.
One of my big concerns, this is Lee Dakin.
Go ahead.
Is, is accountability. So far, you know, we've had people report, be fearful, be bitten, and they follow through on the responsibility and yet we can't seem to hear from the dog owner. And I, I, I worry about what we're going to end up doing when we don't even have the courtesy and the responsibility of the owner of the dog to present before us information.
No, I, I agree with you, Lee, and I think that's going to weigh heavy on any decision that we make, knowing that the owner is not even here to try to help us with this situation. So, it's going to be in our hands. Any other final questions or comments regarding this issue?
Should we wait till we invite somebody else, right?
No, we're, there, there's going to be some action taken. We're gonna do what we can.
But also, a question I might have, because the dog's not registered and has tags of his residency in, in Chester, Vermont, is, we have some guidelines we can follow as far as impounding the dog for its safety and other safety because they've not followed the rules of registration and licensing the dog?
I think that can be part of your decision-making this evening.
Not hearing, no more, well, not hearing any more questions or comments, I would entertain a motion that at the end of this meeting, that we go into deliberative session to review this case and come up with a decision on this.
So moved.
Second.
Please, the motion, Heather is the second.
Second.
All those in favor of going into deliberative session, we'll be doing this at the end of our meeting and we'll be going through all the information that we've been given and we will have a decision, more than likely, at the end of our deliberative session.
Well, thank you.
That'll be, that will be tonight?
It'll be tonight, but it'll be after our, the rest of our agendas.
Yeah, so you're welcome, I mean, anybody is welcome to stay. There is an executive session tonight where we're talking about a cell tower lease. So, it could be lengthy, you're welcome to stay and come back, or you can give me a call tomorrow morning and I can let you know what happened.
Definitely.
Okay, you're welcome.
All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 At this time, this hearing is closed until a deliberative session later on this evening. If there's some folks that would like to exit the meeting and not hang around for the rest of it, that's, that's fine right now, we'll give you a break and then we'll get back to our agenda items. And thank you all for coming. I realize it's not an easy thing to do sometimes, but it's pretty-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Hello, Adam, this is Lee Dakin.
Hello.
Hi. I, I know you because you and my son went to school together.
I thought that I might have recognized your last name.
I hope so.
Hopefully, you're doing okay. What, who should I call to find out the verdict of this?
You can call me in the morning, Adam.
Who is this?
This is Julie.
Julie, okay, I will.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Good job.
I had help.
You've done good, Arnie.
I had help.
We all need help.
Yeah.
From our friends.
That's right. What's his name, Joe Conker?
One of my favorites.
Want me to sing?
Yeah, sure.
Ah, goodbye. It was Justin, it was, oh, wait. Okay, we'll, we'll head on with our agenda. And our next item on our agenda is the Whiting Library Board of Trustees appointment. Everybody in your package has a letter from the Chairman of the Whiting Library Board of Trustees, Robert Need, wrecking, recommending Rosamund Conroy of the Grafton Road in Chester to be a, appointed as a Whiting Library Board of Trustee. I always find it encouraging when newcomers to our town want to get involved with the local government and especially the library or any other parts of, of the town. She seems like she's extremely well-qualified and I would entertain a motion to appoint Rosamund Conroy to the Board of Trustees for the Whiting Library.
So moved.
Second.
So, Heather is the motion. Lee Gustafson's the second. Any discussion on this? Anybody have any questions or comments or?
Well, I agree with you that she seems wonderfully qualified, so we'd be lucky to have her.
I agree.
Great. So, Robert, do we have a full board now after this, after this appointment?
We would, indeed, yes. And I would just echo that Rosamund not only being extraordinarily qualified, is really passionate and, and cares a great deal about libraries in general, but told me that one of the reasons she moved to Chester was the library, that she thought it was just an important asset to the community. So, we're really grateful to have her interest and thank you for your support.
Well, that's, that's great news. Thank you, Robert. All those, all those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
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 And I'm not gonna even bother with the opposed. Next item on our agenda is the Hazard Mitigation Plan Review. It's a five-year plan and it, we renew it every year?
We renew, no, this is, so you're thinking of the local.
Oh, okay.
This is the, the local, you're thinking of the Local Emergency Operations Plan that we do every year. This is the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan that is every five years and is required by FEMA. And Cindy Ingersoll is here from Regional Planning, they are, who have been helping the Public Safety Department Heads through this process. So, any questions, I would send them that way.
And what was your name again?
Cindy Ingersoll. I believe I've worked with you before.
Please use the microphone.
Have a seat, Cindy, that microphone, yeah.
I work for now Mount Scotty Regional Commission. I've been with them about six years. I've done a number of hazard mitigation plans, but I believe your last one, Ally Hopkins, worked on that with you, is that correct?
Yeah.
Just briefly, I, I manage the Commission's Brownfields Program. I work on the Clean Water State Grant, the, the Design Implementation Block Grant, which the Commission administers for the state. I write community development block grants and do environmental reviews. So, and, and in addition to, to that, I do hazard mitigation planning work for the Commission for various towns. So, this process, your, your prior plan was dated 2016 to 2020. It's a five-year plan and a town needs to have a current FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan in order to, it's a requirement if the town wishes to receive post-disaster funding from the federal government. Seventy-five percent of your needs, post-disaster needs, would be covered by FEMA, but you need to have a current plan. So, your plan had expired in May. As long, I was able to get a preliminary draft of that plan submitted to Vermont Emergency Management. Just that submission brings you current. Even as we go through this review process, I just want you to know that you're covered right now, even though there was a, a short span there of, of not having a current plan. But having this current plan also allows the town to apply for the various FEMA hazard mitigation grants and it allows the town to receive additional emergency relief assistance funding from the state. You get, on the top of the seventy-five percent, you get another twelve and a half percent because of the various pieces, I guess your road erosion inventory is part of that, the, the emergency operating plan's part of that, and this is part of that, to allow you to get that additional percentage in relief funding. So, that's why we're doing this. FEMA has certain elements that they look for in every draft plan in order to approve it and they expect a, a public component to the planning and drafting phase. That's also why we're here, that this is a public hearing to allow public comment on the draft. We had formed, Juliet formed, a Hazard Mitigation Committee of such, if you want to mention the names of the people that, that were involved in this.
So, Kirby from Highway, Rick from PD, Matt from Fire, Amanda from Ambulance, and myself, so the Public Safety Division.
So, this is the public informational meeting at this time?
This is a public informational meeting right now, correct.
And is there only one? Well, we had met actually four times prior to this, the committee had three- No, no, I'm sorry, is there only one public hearing?
For the Select Board?
The-
Yeah, that's the only one required, I mean, you could have more, I guess.
It's, you don't have, you, there's only one, well, I don't even know that they necessarily require a hearing, but there needs to be a publicly noticed meeting. They actually want two, at least one during the planning phase, which we've had-
And then when we adopt it, yeah.
I think you, you noticed all three of, of the planning ones.
Correct, when we, when the board met, there's just a little agenda that went, not the board, the little committee that, that met, yeah.
Yeah, you just posted, say that this is, so, so you've done more than meet that requirement for posting, for public meeting, when we met publicly and we had posted the, you know, the Zoom link and, and that sort of thing to allow the public to participate. Oddly enough, there were no public participants other than the committee.
I don't know that anybody even really paid any attention. I mean, I, we just put it out there.
It's unusual to get people to participate. This is probably the biggest exposure we get.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't really like, really work hard to get it out there, I wasn't supposed to, was I?
No, you just need to put, no, you just need to post it, like your regular distribution when you post.
It's like I wasn't like working hard to get it.
No, you just go through your regular channels as you would, posting any meeting, so that's, that's fine.
All right.
Now, we've done all the legal requirements, but this is part of the-
Sorry I asked the question. All I wanted to know is some things we have to do more than others. Yes, so. No, and I, and, and based on the preliminary draft and the comments that came back from the state, which have been incorporated, this draft is, is technically approved. It has all the elements that they're looking for and that includes the public piece of this, the public involvement piece. But still, it's, it, this is a draft and, and, you know, I want to provide the board an opportunity to understand what it is because you'll be adopting this once we get the final check-off from FEMA, so. And how long does that take? Well, you know, it's, the, the process has been shortened a great deal because this is the first year that the state actually has the authority to approve these plans without the plan having to go to FEMA. They've, they've- So when the state approves the plan, and they've been very responsive, FEMA automatically, uh, provides a letter of approval to the town.
So the federal government trusts us now to be able to handle this?
Exactly. Trust the state.
Only on this.
Trust the state. So do the reviews.
So, but my question was about how long, do you, like, are we expecting approval in three months, six months?
No, I would say a month. Once this, this, uh, comment period, and this is, um, a hearing, but the comments are open until the end of the month. If, if the public wishes to send Julie or I a comment after this hearing, at least that was what was in the notice, that's fine.
Yep.
Once, um, if we receive comments, those will get incorporated. The plan will go back within a week, back to, uh, Vermont Emergency Management. They'll review it and I'm going to say by the end of September, there'll be a final plan, so you could possibly be adopting, uh, in October.
So you're, you're familiar with the old plan, I assume?
Yes.
Is there a big difference between the old one and the new one, or are there any big changes in it?
Well, you know, that's, and that's a great question. Um, the, the structure of the plan itself, uh, not too much, other than the fact that I think we've included a little more graphics and photos and it's, it's interesting and a lot more, um, local data than we had had before on the various hazards that impact the town. I'd say having gone, the committee having gone through the exercise of assessing the various natural hazards, we went through a scoring exercise to get an idea of what impacts the town the most based on historical occurrences, uh, the potential for future occurrences and the impact on the town. Um, I think most interesting, uh, difference would be that there are some hazards now that are being considered in this plan, profiled and detailed, um, that were not in the prior plan, and those are heat, extreme heat, uh, wind, ice, and drought.
Sounds like climate change.
It sure does, doesn't it? So...
It's like what we've been going through this year.
Yeah, well, exactly. But five years ago, those hazards were, were down the list in terms of scoring and rating. They were not considered, uh, likely. So they've come up, uh, and also we touch upon invasive species, which is also climate-driven with the ash ore and the pine, um, which could impact infrastructure down the road. That's touched upon in this plan, as are infectious diseases also obviously touched upon, COVID.
Wow. It's like a little ahead of its time almost. That's, that's interesting that it's, the, the area that it's covering is expanding because of what's happening.
Exactly, yeah. As it should.
Yeah.
This is supposed to be a proactive, pro-looking plan to come up with mitigating actions or strategies to reduce the impact of these hazards on the town. So all this effort and review of, uh, other reports and documents, the River Corridor Plan, road erosion reports, the town plan, we took all of this and it culminated into a, um, a final listing of proposed actions and strategies that the town could consider taking over the next five years that would reduce risk to these hazards. Um, and that's, that, along with a planned monitoring process to take a look at these every year and see, okay, what progress have we made? What, what can we do moving forward for the next year, um, to see if we can make the plan effective in accomplishing some of the things that we're trying to do here.
I think it's going to be helpful that they are expanding those areas because I, I see in the future that those things are going to be a big issue.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to affect us in, in big ways.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. So, um, even if you haven't had a chance to actually, you know, look at the plan or read it, um, I would encourage you, if you do, you know, get the chance to take a look at the, um, the Table 12 at the end of the document. And there's about, oh, a couple dozen, I think, strategies that we have there. Uh, the, they're, they're prioritized. We have kind of a subjective, um, way of prioritizing the hazards, uh, or the strategies based on feasibility, availability of funding, so, community support, these types of things. They're kind of subjectively ranked highly, high, medium, low for priority. There's a timeframe given to each one of them, a responsible party. Um, but those things are, you know, other than just, you know, the strategies, you know, FEMA looks that you've given some thought to priority, that you've given some thought to timeline, you are not held to, to do all these or accomplish all these strategies. Their, FEMA just looks for progress and Chester has made prog, a lot of progress in the past and continues to. But I don't want the town to think they're obligated to fulfill all these proposed recommendations. Um, but certainly to make some progress is what we're looking to do.
And I, and I would imagine that some of those recommendations are more pertinent in Chester than others.
Yes.
You know, I mean, we have a lot of rivers and bridges and roads and that are, you know, when Irene came through, it really did a number on our town.
Right.
It did. And a lot of these are quite specific. Some of them are actually have started and are ongoing because this plan, new update, covers 21 to 26, 2021 to 2026. So, um, some of these things you're already working on actually that are, that we've outlined.
So I, I would ask if there's anyone out there that would like to make any, have any questions or comments regarding this plan, now would be the time to do so. It's a public hearing regarding this document and, uh, we're open for, uh, comments or suggestions or questions.
And certainly if you want to take a look later, uh, you can always email me if you have any thoughts or something you want to add. It's a dynamic list of ideas.
Okay. Anybody? All set?
No, thank you.
All set, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience.
Thanks, David.
Next item is just a little bit of housekeeping for cemetery deeds.
Cemetery deeds. Yep.
Your motions just signed, yeah? You just sign them.
Okay.
Hi, Bill.
Hi. Hi, Bill.
Hi.
I am too. I'm sitting over here yawning all night.
I am too.
Except I'm sitting here yawning all night. Are you saying?
I'm...
It picks it all up. Don't have to worry about that. All set with those documents? Mm-hmm. Uh, new business, future agenda items. Uh, where's my memo? Got lost in the shuffle here. You've got a few things on there, didn't you?
The only thing that's likely going to happen is you, this joint meeting with Andover.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll be working on, I'm gathering kind of the history of the numbers and where we're at and how we got there. Um, and then we'll be rerunning, so, you know, we have added new things like a public safety building, uh, to our capital list. So, uh, re, relooking at all of the capital, what does it truly take to operate all of those departments? Um, and then I'll have the most recent 2020 census data, um, and the most recent grant list, so what those formulas look like.
I mean, a lot of, a lot of that was driven by our relationship as far as the fire department goes, but there's other things too that we share.
We do. So we bill for, uh, ambulance, we bill for ambulance, we bill for fire, we bill for communications, which is the dispatch line, and then we bill for, uh, recreation.
Yeah. So that'll be on a, a future agenda?
That'll be on your next agenda.
And it'll be a joint meeting?
Uh, the, the two board members that were here asked for a joint meeting. I don't know that all of the Andover Select Board will be here, but I will certainly provide them with the same information that I provide you.
But if we are inviting two members, the only reason I said that last meeting is I think we should have the opportunity for all members to know what's going to be.
Absolutely. I'm going to send it to them. What they decide to do is entirely up to them, but it will get sent to their town clerk who is, who disseminates to their board, so that's, that's...
Are we also going to have a discussion with them about the speed limits or the speed issue on Andover Road?
You certainly could. We could add that as an agenda item as well.
Okay. I'd like to do that.
Sure.
Yeah, so would I.
Okay.
We share a lot with Andover, so it, I think it's helpful to have these conversations and we probably should have a little more often. Do we have the same, uh, or any kind of agreement with other surrounding towns that we provide services for, or we don't?
We don't. It's Andover's who we, we provide coverage for.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, there's mutual aid agreements, but those are done at a state level.
Right, right.
Or a district level, I should say.
Yeah.
Um, this is Chester and Andover, that's the only relationship we have.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else, uh, have any, uh, requests for future agenda items?
Not at this time.
Nope. All right. Next item would be to enter executive session for a discussing, I can't even speak, for a discussion regarding cell tower lease with T-Mobile. In your package, we've got the, uh, paperwork regarding this and I would entertain that motion. So moved.
Second.
Lee is the motion. Uh, Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion on this? All those...
Aye.
Yep?
Yes, Sean. Uh, will there be a waiting room for, uh, the executive session and for the deliberative session?
We, we can. If you want to hang on and wait, we can put you in the waiting room.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Sean. All those in favor of entering executive session for their cell tower lease review with T-Mobile, please say aye.
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 Opposed. All right, we're in executive session. Take a minute to...